Welcome, I'm Tim Skogans, Chairman of the Shastbury Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, October 21, 2019. First, let me check with the board, does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
We have minutes to approve that have been circulated. We've been waiting for the right people to show up. Let's go back to 9:03. We need Tim, Ken, and Tony, that will do it. Is there a motion to approve the minutes circulated for September 9th?
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussions, additions, or corrections to the minutes? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes for September 9th approved, 3:00. September 16th, Tim, Ken, Tony.
All right.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes as circulated for September 16th?
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussions, additions, or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those minutes are approved, 3:00. Tim, Tony, and Ken. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes that were circulated for October 2nd?
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion, addition, or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the minutes for October 2nd are approved, 3:00. October 14th.
It's there.
Okay. Special meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes that were circulated for October 14th?
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion, additions, or corrections?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes for October 14th are approved, 3:00. Oh, I missed.
Seventh.
Missed the seventh.
Ooh.
Yep, we got the right three. Motion to approve the minutes that were circulated for October 7th.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any additions, corrections, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the minutes for October 7th are approved, 3:00.
That's it.
How do we do here, Dave?
Is it, is all, is all?
Warrants. Looks like I just have the one. Check warrant number 10, an amount of $56,093.90. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Items over $1,000 on this one are $6,500 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, $1,400 to Bennington Tire Corporation, $1,500 to Business Card Services. Is that mailing tax bills?
No, that was to buy the compressor for the garage.
From Business Card Services?
Well, that's the credit card. I have my own tools. Yeah, we don't have an account with them, so I had to buy them.
Okay, Roger that. $2,400 to Cartographic Technologies, this is our web GIS report, it says. $1,200 to Gable Fuels. $12,000 and $3,700, nope. $12,000, $13,000 almost, to Howard P. Fairfield.
That's the rental for the roadside mower.
There you go. $3,700 to Innovative Solutions, which is our chloride company now. $1,100 to Morse Repair. $1,500 to Nibberick Annual Support. $1,200 to Wellington Crush Stone. $3,400 to William E. Daly. $13,000 to William E. Daly. Is that?
That's part of the projects.
Projects that are going on, yeah. And those are the major items. Is there any more discussion on check warrant number 10?
No.
All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So check warrant number 10, in the amount of $56,093.90 is approved, 3:00. I would just remind the people at home that a new town plan is under review. It has been sent from the Planning Commission to the Select Board. Select Board will hold a hearing on November 4th, and then another one on December 2nd. The plan is available online. If you're not able to get it online, call the town offices and we'll find a way to get a copy to you. Any public comments? Treasures Report.
I think this gentleman.
Yeah, you do have a comment, okay.
I didn't know we'd.
Yeah, now's the time.
... I don't know if you can.
Can you give us your name first?
I'm sorry. My name is Jerry Eyball, I reside at 2167 Myers Road, here in Shastbury since 1982. I take a lot of pride in my property, and if anybody ever rides by, they can see, as Ken can witness, I spend a lot of time and money keeping my property pristine. I have a major problem with a neighbor, and again, I don't know if you can help me, or if you can direct me to an area, or give me some advice how I can solve this. For many years, I've had a problem with our neighbor Ronald and Nancy Natto. They have approximately 25 to 30 head of cattle on their property, that constantly, they come down the road and enter my property. They have caused damage. I'm very concerned that they will get inside my split rail fence, and onto my swimming pool deck, and maybe into the swimming pool. My wife and I were coming home from dinner a week and a half ago, at 10:30 at night, and we came within five feet of broadsiding one there ahead of cattle on Myers Road. I called the state police, the sergeant from the local barracks came over, and his entire herd was all over my property, causing damage and leaving their exclusive waste materials down my driveway and all over the place. This has been going on for several years now, and I have to find a way to stop. I went to an attorney in New York, in Bennington, and it cost me $1,500 to send him a certified return receipt requested, stating that if it continues to happen, we will have to take it to court. The attorney wanted about $5,000 or $6,000 on top of that as a retainer, and I decided for financial reasons not to go that route. They were served, and they didn't adhere to anything. The entire herd was removed from my property, as I was witnessing, along with the sergeant from the state police, and he was, he instructed Ronald Natto to come to the barracks the next morning, for which he would be offered the summons, for cattle roaming on the border cord, which is $60 for the first violation, and then it escalates after that. He told me a story, the sergeant, that upstate, a while ago, a car hit a bull on the road, and the bull came through the windshield and killed the fellow's wife. I don't know at this point, I am under the impression that he did not show up the next day in the barracks to receive the complaint and the summons. This has to stop. It's a safety hazard, it's doing a number on my property, I have some photographs, if you guys are interested in seeing, just through the years. Natto said to me, if I'm so concerned about 25 to 30 head of cattle roaming my property, that I should put up an electric fence. When he told me that, I went slightly ballistic. So, that's my tale of woe. I do have an electric fence just down my driveway, and I have a split rail fence around my inner portion around my house. When this happened the other night, there was 10 of them leaning up against my split rail fence to the south. If I wasn't there to show them away, they would have definitely come in, and onto my pool deck, and into my pool. I can't tell you what that would cost. So, I need some help, I need some direction, some ideas, and what, if anything, can the board help me out?
Well, I certainly sympathize.
I'm sorry, sir?
I certainly sympathize with your plight there, but it's a legal matter, and that, you know, we don't have a police force here, we depend on the state troopers and the sheriff for legal enforcement. If, you know, he has violated the law, been served a summons, and then ignored the summons, I would think he would be in court before too long.
Excuse me, he hasn't, hasn't been put his hand yet. I understand as of today, they're going to do something about that. As far as, and I understand it is a legal matter, and I come here for some ideas, that's the purpose of my visiting meeting tonight. If I take him to court, the fine for roaming cattle is $20. It will cost the state of Vermont several thousand dollars to hold a jury trial. It's kind of ludicrous when you think about it. And think of your grandchildren playing soccer on your front lawn, falling down in cow pies. It's not very nice. So that's my tale of woe, and something has to be done. If it was legal to make hamburger meat out of it, I would certainly do it.
Well, it would seem that if somebody else's animals are damaging your property, there's legal avenues that you would have, other than cattle roaming on the yard, and I'm just guessing here, I don't know the law, but.
It's a $20 fine.
For?
Roaming cattle. But it's a different story when they're on the public road. We came within five feet of broadsiding one, or one of them, at 10:30, they crossed over, the whole herd, to Leslie, Russ Leslie's property, crossed the road for me, and then they came back, and that's when the trooper showed up. So, now, in the past, the Humane Society, this was in the late 90s, confiscated his horses, and I believe his pigs, and they were being treated not humanly. So.
Have you still got that pool, Jerry?
Sure do.
If they step on that cover, they're going through anything.
Absolutely. It will only hold 600 pounds and 10-foot diameter of the cover, and I would think a cow wastes a little more than that.
Well, my rabbit would do quite a lot more than that pool.
Tremendous. They're good.
Yeah.
They're nice. So this is a major problem, and it's not why I came to Shastbury since 82, to have a range war going on with my neighbor.
Well, it's an agricultural estate.
I'm sorry?
It's an agricultural estate, so you're fighting that issue, but I would pursue it subtly, too. You've already served it once, and continue. The other thing I would do is to make sure with every incident, that you're contacting the state police and keeping a record of their response.
I am doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the first time they actually listed.
Yeah.
It was finished, it was finished at midnight, getting the last.
Sure.
On my property.
Sure. How are you getting away with not having a fence or any pool?
I have a split rail fence.
Oh, I had to have a four-foot fence put up.
And I have an electrically operated safety cover.
Oh, okay.
All right, which will hold, I think, 600 to 800 pounds in a 10-foot diameter, and it's always closed. So that takes the place, it's actually better than a fence, a high fence around it.
Yeah.
And again, Ken is aware of it.
I know, I'm probably badly right.
I'm probably floating at night, he doesn't know it, he was skinny dipping in my pool.
Yeah.
Jerry, I don't, this is just if it was my problem, and I realize you stand up to do this. If it was me, I think I'd go down to Whitman's, or tractor supply, and just put an electric fence around the outside of my property.
Well, I.
It must be cheaper than the lawyer or the.
I almost have 50 acres, and to feed that with electricity is gonna be, is a hustle.
Well, it's just a suggestion, I'm not.
You know, it's amazing that I have to go through that expense.
Oh, I understand.
There's an old adage in life, good men's business made for good neighbors.
I understand, I understand, but sometimes it's better to. I don't always have to work until.
Well, I'll give you one quick example. Many years ago, Donnie Peters, and I'm sure a lot of gentlemen know that name, he was backing up to my fences on the west side, pulling them down, and letting his cattle roam on my property. I was living in New York at the time, and I took him to court, and I went back and forth three or four times, it was a jury trial, and they were paying me, I think, 25 cents or 35 cents a mile. Now, I was 168 miles from here, went back and forth, we won the case, he was fined for two counts of roaming cattle, $40. I was issued a check for about $400, and the jury trial and the court time and all of that cost the state several thousands of dollars. The law is so antiquated, isn't it funny? Forty bucks.
I know.
And after that, he accused me of attempted murder.
Ouch.
We have to punch the state trooper. So I've had some terrific neighbors here in the state.
Dave, was there's nothing that we can do?
No. I even checked back through the old land records, back 40 years, because the fences between properties have to be recorded, if there's an agreement between property owners, and no agreement exists for the past 40 years, that would give you some ability to go after a part of the fencing law, where you would both be required to maintain the fence, even though that's been challenged in court, too. So, essentially, Ken's idea to save money, maybe not all 50 acres, but to the part you need the most, because there's really, not these laws, the laws you're talking about, because I read those before we've talked before, I hope you've called the Humane Society, but.
I'm calling them tomorrow.
It's gonna be a long time before any of those laws have changed.
The thing is, the herd comes down the road.
Which is a different thing, because when they're on the road, that's covered by the state police, if you don't have a fence in the front, then all they can do is say that he's roamed, they're roaming, which is back to the $20 fine again.
They come down the road and into my driveway.
Yeah.
As one of those pictures, you can see.
Maybe just put a short piece of electric fence up, where they're coming in.
I'm gonna have to get us to move on here, we're, we sympathize with your plight, but I really don't think there's anything we can do, yeah.
No home in trial.
All right, thanks for coming in. Charlie, did you have something? You're just here to enjoy our company?
I'm just here for somebody that's in the town that's just here.
Thank you, yeah. You can see the surprise on her face, she really tickled to have you. Okay, Treasures Report, Melanie.
Hello. I want to pull up the cash flow. Okay. As usual, this time of year, it's all about taxes. You see, I've taken in half a million dollars so far this month.
Excellent.
I'm burning the midnight oil a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
If you go down to the very bottom, you'll see that represents almost 19% of the total. Tax bills have been out for, I want to say six or seven weeks, and when I put the tax bills in the mail here, and I, last year I did it in the paper, and to everybody who walks in my door, I say, "Look at it as soon as you get it," because if you wait to look at it and you see something that doesn't look right, you might wait so long that it can't be fixed. And as of now, I believe you cannot get your homestead declaration in if you do not already have it in. Vermonters have to do that every single year, it's not a once and done thing, it's every single year. I've had, I might keep track of my statistics here of how many people come into my office and scream and swear at me, because that, it's not just a couple this year. They get very, very angry because they are paying the non-resident education rate, and that is not something that's set at the town, that's set at the state, I have no say in the matter whatsoever. And so, please, please, please look at your bills as soon as you get them, and if there's some paperwork that didn't get in into the state, then it can still be rectified up to a certain point, and we're past that point. So that's just a word to the wise. I really don't want people to have to pay more than they need to, but they do have to do their declaration every year. Everybody knows that, right?
Yes, it's on my Google Calendar.
Yeah, yeah, it's really important, because you can pay a lot of extra money if you don't get that declaration in. So that's my sermon for the day. We could also look at the other spreadsheet, although there's hardly anything going on, reserve funds. Some, just a little bit of water money still trickling in, so that's all delinquent water, and then the new bills will be going out next month, so that'll shoot out. And then that park grant, remind me what that was, Dave, the $10,000 grant, that was.
That was one of the state, we used it to put playground equipment.
Right, right. So that's all that's going on with the reserve funds right now. So, I mean, it's all taxes, I don't, that's all that's going on right now.
Mm-hmm. And I assume spending is on track with last year, like it always is?
Yeah, I don't usually look at that in the middle of the month, because you can't really project a budget with, so, yeah, it was, the last time we looked at it, it was right on target, exactly on target.
Okay, good. Questions? Good, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, can you tell us what's going on in panel?
I just, I just see what's in the paper.
I don't want you to get into that.
I don't know firsthand what's going on, it's pretty expensive.
Okay, Ruud Report.
Charlie, we're in the roads with, first off, I think the crew did a great job with the storm we had the other night. David and Tim, I believe, came out at midnight, and were out till about 4:00, and then everybody else was back in the morning. I have done a few calls today about trees, we have a lot of trees to pick up on the side of the road, so it's gonna take a few days to get all those cleared up. And some were down long, I think people understand that the trees that remained in the road were there because there were wires on them, and we can't touch any of those. I wouldn't be surprised if there's still a few hung-on wires somewhere that the power company will have to get back to. But as of today, everything's off, and they just have to clean up, but that will take a few days. We're just about, the hollow's wrapped up, we have, I think, 100 or 150 more feet to do on Myers Road in the drain, we're putting down the center of the road, and that'll wrap up construction for this season. We still have some grading to do, it's, you know, getting winter time, time to move on to other projects, get, start getting the salt in, the sand has to be moved from here to the new building, so the projects are done. We might do one more, but that's way up at the end of Glasson Berry, there's a retaining wall up there that we want to top, so that it's more stable. But that would be about it until next spring. And the only one we don't haven't gotten to is, that we planned for this whole year was by the apple orchard on West Mountain Road, and we'll do that in the spring. We could probably try and force it in now, but there's just things that need to get done before winter, so that can probably wait till the spring.
What are you doing, just rip right back Glasson Berry?
Yeah.
What was planned by the apple orchard, was that by our crew or a contract?
That was, that was gonna be by our crew, yeah.
And what were they gonna do?
Probably just a French brand of burrito underneath, remove the water from one side to the other. We put a couple in there in the spring, on the down part, because you come down in the bottom, but going up the hill going west, it gets pretty muddy, too, I just don't think we're gonna get to that.
The first 100 feet or so?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
But the hollow's done, that came out very nice, we're on track with all the budgets for all of it, and we'll look at the spring, we're looking at a $60,000 grant to take on one of our other projects. You know, we finished the surveys of the road last year, we have a list that the engineers prepared for us to try and follow in order, the highest priority down, so we're looking at which one to take the first grant I've found since then, because we can get $60,000, we're onto kind of big projects now, so $60,000 will match that with $15,000, so we're looking at like a $75,000 project, plus that bigger call with the slip line in the hollow, which we're probably gonna ask for a year extension on, because it's still in good shape. If you remember when we started that one a few years back, it has multiple years left on its lifespan, and obviously, and unfortunately, things keep going up, we didn't get the state matching grant until last year, and the prices exceed our capabilities at the moment for our end of the match, because they only give $175, and we're up to like $250. So we'll ask for an extension for another year, which really shouldn't be a big issue, and we'll try and get it in next year.
Is anybody checked that cover?
Yeah.
Has it got worse?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we have A&R, our original engineer and Mike are going up to kind of reevaluate, because we also have the fish question of, you know, do we have to expand the opening or something like that, so they're gonna go up and have one, another look at it, finalize the plans that management engineering had put together with us, and then we'll take it out to bid, and we'll get some amount out of it, see what it currently is.
If you guys are gonna sleep in 20 minutes, I'll fix that.
I know you'll find you'll fix. It's the people who fall in the 21st minute who come, and they have to take someone's book.
Yeah, we'll get the power.
Yeah.
Well, I remember it, when that, the first solution that we approved for that was a $130,000 solution.
The slip line is.
Almost twice that now.
Yeah. The slip line has gone up substantially, because they, we had five options, we took the second one, which was a slip line. And the first one was substantially cheaper and lasts less than half a year.
That's what I remember, the cheapest was $130, but the other one was like $170.
It was $170, I think it was a little bit higher than $130. But the difference in time is like 30 years, this one will last nearly, the slip line will last 60 to 70 years, the first option, I know the one you like, but that only lasts like 20, 25 years, so if they're gonna give us a grant, we can save us more, why not make a bridge for 75 years? I know, the cost of all this stuff is getting to be kind of.
Yeah, I mean, we're three times our life for less than twice the cost, it's like, it's worth it.
Yeah, and if we delay another year, like I said, we're gonna take some trees down and just review the extended maintenance of it to stretch it out for a couple, it's stable, it's not going forward. But it does have to be done, so if we can put some money aside for a couple of years, it'll definitely.
Did we ever get a price for a pre-cash concrete for that?
We got prices for what the board approved. I have to go back and see what the five options were, they went from the middle one we have, the second one, to very expensive, and I think the concrete was above it.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. And if we go above the slip line, we're into takings, we're into temporary bridges, we're into everything else, and that is gonna be really expensive and not really worth it. This is an easy solution for this. The longest time we can get, you know.
I thought we'd picked it for a reason.
Yeah, everything else just gets too problematic. If you want to go and start taking land to put a temporary road and a temporary bridge, it's, this we can do in place. Alls we have to do is ban trucks for a couple of days, notify everybody, tell your fuel oil people, you know, they can't come up this weekend. But it'd be done during the summer anyway, so very little heavy goes up there.
Okay.
What else do we have?
Truck covers.
The truck covers, yes.
Yeah, the issue we've been talking about is whether or not we're going to retrofit our trucks to cover the gravel. When it's being hauled, Art was looking into this rumored municipal exemption. He has not been able to find any documentation of that. And so I think what we're looking at is that, like all the other commercial trucks, we should have tarps on our trucks when we travel around with gravel.
Yeah.
Dave has been telling me that we, with our smaller trucks, our single-axle trucks, we don't haul gravel, that we haul sand for plowing. And that it's the tandem trucks that we use to haul gravel, and we need to do that. And that certainly our first step, we can debate further if we want to, but it seems like we're in general agreement that the tandems should be retrofitted. The other issue is that one of the, one of the single axles is due to be replaced in the budget we're going to be talking about later, so. And like I say, the main thing is we don't use it to haul gravel, which is the main danger from this type of thing. And it was twenty-five hundred dollars a truck, is that...
I haven't really checked with Mike, but it was something like twenty, two thousand, twenty-five hundred a truck.
So we're looking at five thousand to retrofit two trucks?
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll have it somewhere. We can take care of it. And we'll just do those two. Because like you said, the one single axle is pretty much semi-retired now, because the North Banken truck is technically replacing that. We're just keeping it as a backup truck. And next year, we already have program to replace the other single axle, so there's no point in retrofitting those at this juncture. But when we order the new one, it'll be ordered with this as part of it. They just, we never ordered with them here. So we'll just change that and order them from now on. And partly the expense of this is because we have to have parts welded on the truck to...
Unless we order those other drafts.
Yeah, well, that's a whole, unless we go the smaller ones, and then we don't need them.
Do you need a rush?
Yes.
Make a motion that we ordered the covers.
Second motion from Tony to retrofit the two tandem trucks with tarps to cover gravel loads, seconded by Ken. Any more discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that motion is approved, three zero zero.
I got one more thing at Rhodes. General Calm about a side missing at the intersection of, I believe he said, the shaft by hollow and grigio, roadside.
What, just the road names?
Yeah.
That's the time, that one's disappeared.
There's a market for them, apparently. You have trouble keeping them.
Yeah, that one was, I believe that was one of the ones that was screwed in like in multiple different ways to try and keep in place. You know, I still go back to the one where somebody drove up with their pickup truck, and they stood in the back and hammered away at the thing till it fell off. And people were like, "Yeah, we heard it," but, you know, it's like...
Well, who'd let you trust them?
Well, it's gone now, so. But there are some names that are quite popular.
And Calhoun's Dunes.
Yeah, well, we'll go get them.
And how much do they cost?
They can get really expensive, and the size they're required to have now, I'm not going to give you a price off the top of my head, but if you think shafts where your hollow road has to be printed off like that...
Yeah, that's a long...
It's a long sign. You know, Potter Montgomery doesn't take it anymore, because it's too long, they can't get it in the car.
Sneak the birds. Did we get that road road yet?
No, they were supposed to start last week, I guess they're a little delayed, so.
Wait.
Yeah, yeah. But they will be here, they need to be here by winter. We're paying them, they'll show up.
Okay.
I have no, I don't show up. And that's all I have for roads.
Anything else on roads, gentlemen? Okay, Dave, tell us about the book you found with a hundred years of city ordinances in it that I have ever read.
Yeah, this is something, we have a book of ordinances and policies. This is something I've wanted to get to for a while, and now that, you know, DPW has squared away, I need to get to this. Many of these policies are completely outdated and should be eliminated completely. Most of the ordinances need to be updated. The traffic ordinance for the town, the paper has literally changed color because it's been in the book for so long, it's been so long since it's been updated. So what I want to do is I sent around to everybody the procedures for changing policies and ordinances. And I'm going to start sending out before, the week before each meeting, two or three policies, depending on the length, that will either have proposed changes in it or just proposing to eliminate it. This is a number that really needs to be eliminated completely. And then the longer ones, the first one that ordinance will get is the dog ordinance, which is outdated, and we need to change it to make the sheriffs the enforcement of the arm. And that goes through a different process, but it can all be done here. And those will come out one at a time, the last one being traffic, because that's the longest one and the most outdated one. And I think there'll be some discussion, because some of those things really should be changed at this point. So that'll be the one that'll start up the most controversy. And most of these, it's more procedural, but we have this, these are all in the books, and they need to be changed, and they need to be updated. So I sent that around, I want to bring it up tonight, because the next meeting, maybe not the next meeting, because we have town plan the next meeting, but the meeting after that, you'll get some of these, probably four or five, especially the policies that just should go. We should just start voting to eliminate these things and change the ordinances. The ordinance will be by the mid-November, because we want to get that in place, because the licenses are going to start again. People need to know when we send out things about the dog licenses, that, you know, we've tried several ways the last few years to enforce this, none of it has worked. Well, now we'll contract with the sheriff's office, and we'll send deputies to your house, and if you get a summons from them, you're just going to Port and Bennington. And it's going to be fifteen times what your dog license would have cost, so.
And ordinances require town vote to change?
No. Ordnances can be approved by the select board. We have to have two hearings, it has to be, a summary has to be published, it has to be posted in five things, there's a little checklist on there. And, but it can all be done here, so we can just kind of keep moving this along. But most of them won't be of any controversy whatsoever, but traffic, when we read through that, it's, some of that should be changed.
How far back some of these go?
You know, decades and decades back. I mean, some of the traffic ones are from forty, fifty, sixty years ago. Yeah, some need to be changed.
You remember that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Nothing about cattle, though, right?
No, no cattle, no, that's a whole different problem.
No.
And we probably won't have a cattle ordinance, you know. That's a different one. But yeah, I just wanted to get that out there so we can start on it, and everybody knows how we're going to do it, and just get these moving. It'll be set again for the next sixty years, until someone else pulls this, you know.
Well, we'll put them on the web when we pass them this time.
Yeah, you know, and they should be...
At least we'll be able to find them.
Yeah, they should be cataloged, because, you know, I never understood it, but it was kept in the vault.
Well, that's famous for that.
Yeah, and I'm like, well, if it's in here, and me and the clerk are the only two who know about it, it's, what's the point of having all these things?
See, the state ordinances.
Yeah.
So it was better to force it in?
Well, this is your opportunity to vote no, you know, because as we go through this, which is one of the reasons why I want to do it, let's modernize this. It's twenty-twenty almost, and some of these were written fifty, fifties being conservative how long some of these have been written. So let's just get it up to date. We'll do the whole book, we can do the whole book, you know, within the year, we'll do all the ordinances and everything.
Good.
Just get it done. Get it updated.
Good for you, for me.
So that's all I have on that.
Okay. I have ten, ten, says Coal Hall exterior.
Yes, Coal Hall exterior. Tim and I went down to Goldstone, the board approved a hiring Goldstone to look at changing buildings somewhat. Their prices came up, their estimates of what this would cost were very high, like four hundred thousand.
Well, let's remember that they haven't actually given us an estimate yet. This was when I told them, the two principals there, to, you know, pull a number out of the air. But what we're talking about is, one, the garage is going to go, and so that leaves the question of, you know, what do we do there? At the, you know, minimum, we throw down some gravel and call it parking. But there's some other issues that kind of dovetail into that, and the big one is access, handicap access in particular. The stairway here is difficult for some people to get up and down, and it's in need of some type of repair, and it's really ugly, and we would rather not have it there. If you want to see how ugly it is, notice that it's in our town seal, the picture of Coal Hall, that takes, you know, to show off our beautiful town hall, has a picture of this staircase in it. But more importantly, the elevator access that we have is anything but ideal. Somebody wants to use the handicap elevator, they have to come into the clerk's office, walk through all the work that's going in there, into the closet is where it is, and then come up here and then get out. So we were asking them to help us come up with ideas for, you know, the whole, the whole area here. And they came up with a number of ideas for creating parking with some green space, leveling some of the access so that we don't have the two-foot step drop down from the parking lot into the clerk's office. That would probably still be there, but it would kind of move in different levels to the front. We'd also talked about the fact that it would be nice to have the front more inviting, the step needs work out there. The, if we create, you know, a green space area over here, it would be nice if we could have the Veterans Memorial be seen from there, rather than the way it is now. It's kind of a wall between getting into the front and the rest of the area. But what they came up with was a, an attachment. And rather than glob an elevator onto the side of the building directly, their thought was if the elevator was set off a little ways in its own little square building with a glass walkway that connected it to the building, that you would still see the building through the glass. And so it wouldn't be as, as in the way, I guess is the word, as an elevator attached directly, and certainly less than the staircase is here. So we're still trying to get a number, a real number, out of them on that. But, I mean, the numbers that they were throwing around were larger than we'd like. But we have to consider that that folds into things that we have to do, like, you know, we have to get rid of the old garage, we have to do something underneath it, we have to repair somehow this staircase here. The elevator that we have over here is requiring maintenance several times a year, it just seems like it doesn't work very often.
It actually stalled on me again when I had some banker's boxes in it when I was moving them on Columbus Drive, and it just kind of stopped in the middle.
It's hard to get used to having this type of year anyway, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, I've taken it.
I understand that, that'd be great, but...
Yeah, well, no, yeah, but it's a little balky. It's pretty old, you know, it's old, so.
And, you know, I mean, really, the issue is access. I mean, we, not only are we required by law to provide access, we're, you know, we're morally obligated, I think, to provide decent access. And what we have now barely qualifies as that. It's, you know, if somebody's having mobility problems, it's not any fun to, you know, go through three doors, walk through people's workspace into the closet, take the elevator, it takes a full minute to come up here. It would be nice if it were something that people could actually use without throwing attention to it.
Who would they tie their head in, and the side entrance?
The side. Essentially, it would come in through the same door, again, with the elevator would be enclosed in a, in a small little building, and then it would connect by a glass walkway to...
So you would have just an elevator, or elevator and stairs?
It has to have a stairwell also.
Would have stairwell in it also, yeah.
And there are options to a straight elevator, too, there's things like what's called a lula, which is like an elevator, but it's slower, it's a limited use, limited access elevator. And it has to be set off from the building, because where the doors are downstairs, you know, you can't build it, so it comes right to this doorway, because then there's no access downstairs. So it has to be set back.
Well, just to thought, I mean, I don't, I mean, it would seem to me that if you were going to do an addition to this building, that you'd do less cosmetically and at a cheaper cost if you added that to that front part. It moved the, the more, the more out there already where the garage is.
Well, we're not really, I don't want to...
I just took the box.
No, but I don't want this to be thought of as like an addition to the building. We're not looking for any more interior space for any reason. This is pure getting proper access to the building.
Right.
And that's what we're talking about. Unfortunately, I'd hope to have the papers from Goldstone tonight, so that we could see what they've come up with, but they didn't arrive.
Can I, my original idea was that we would recreate the front of the building as the entrance, is that kind of what you're talking about?
Yeah, well, the other thing is, you know, your roof runs this way. So if you do anything on that side, you're going to have a lot more to cover for the ice and snow falling off the path than you would if you were on the front of the building.
Yeah, the, they were not able to come up with something, essentially is the answer, that the problems here, getting, there's nowhere to put an elevator inside here that coincides with where everybody else would come in. Again, you know, the elevator right here is, you know, the bottom, it's in the closet in the clerk's office. There's no room on the interior of the building over here to put an elevator. So, so there was not a way to do what I had originally suggested, which was create the front here to be the entrance and have that.
I still think that's a better, better way to get in here. If you're to put the elevator over there separate, that's...
Well, the, again, the idea is that the access, that it's less separate, you know, it's more, if people are going to come in over here where the elevator and the stairs are, they're, this, you know, could still be, you know, emergency exit or an alternate exit, and there are, is still work that has to be done there, the steps need to get fixed, and the door needs to get fixed.
I just think that's a matter of when to do it, but that's strictly my opinion.
Yeah, well, that's what I wanted originally, but as far as combining, you know, the main entrance and the handicap access, there was not a way to do it inside the upper of the building.
I could understand that.
And we didn't, they didn't suggest, and I wouldn't suggest either, that we add an elevator to the front of the building, because that would really destroy them.
No, I don't think, that'd be practically, mine would be better if you was going to do one, but straight in the back of the building, just to shoot for the elevator.
That would, that would tear up everybody's work.
Yeah, you couldn't get in.
Yeah.
It'd have to be over here, it's steel.
And then you'd have to have a covered walkway, because you're talking about KDA facility.
Well, yeah, I don't know, I'm here to...
And that's the thing, it'd be nice if we had the stuff in Goldstone when I put this out, but we don't unfortunately.
So I guess the bottom line is, it's probably going to be more than we want, but there are serious issues involved in handicap access, and there are maintenance issues that are coming up, there, you know, we're going to have to spend money on things we don't want if we don't act soon. And the other one to consider is that money is, borrowing money is definitely cheap right now. That even if it were, you know, as much as, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, assuming that we have some to contribute to it with grants or whatever, you're probably looking at, you know, a bond that's a half a cent a year or something like that, I think the numbers that Dave and I were throwing around. You still have the outside to redo, right? I mean, I mean...
I mean, I mean, don't we have to fix a lot of the wooden parts and...
Well, the outside still has to be maintained, all painted, and roof is in good shape, because that was only done 2009. But yeah, it still needs to be painted on the outside. We have a big bill for windows.
Yeah.
And that's, there's no way to slice that. Whoever paints these windows is gonna charge a ton of money. And we have rotten sills over there because nobody's wanted to spend the money for a while. And just mentioning the front steps, these are a couple of things that we really can't wait on. Those steps have to be fixed, because this is still one of the primary exits. We're, you know, historic building, but fact of the matter is that we need to have a proper steps, and I don't even know how you fix that, but they do. And that probably wouldn't be too cheap either. And we have to get rid of the garage. And the key things that need to be done, I'm still hoping the garage will be bought, and it won't cost us anything. But, well, we had the offer when we started, the other garage, that we'll take it, but unfortunately, we still needed it. I've had people ask me for hay barns and everything, you know, so, but they get scared by the insurance, but I tell them, well, you know, go down to an insurance broker, get a commercial policy, two weeks it'll take you to move it from here to there. It's not gonna cost you a fortune considering you're getting a building for, you know, I won't say what price I want, but for a decent price, you know. I think, I think that's kind of a wash, I'm hoping, removing the garage, but...
I think that building is still usable.
Many people do. It's just ignore all the tar on the roof that we put up there to keep the water out. You know, we do have, just to bring you up to speed, we will have about 35,000 that's just being put away into our accounts now. And the balance of the Hawkins Fund, which we've used for construction, which is a good use for the construction. I mean, we could take 48,000 out of that and still leave 80,000 in there. Which is what a board many years ago decided what it should be left at. So there's, there's money out there even just to explore further what to do here. But as Tim said, because I've checked with the bond bank too, it's just the money is like 2.4% right now. I don't know how long money's gonna last at that rate. It's pretty cheap right now.
Well, that's, when I got on this board, money was cheap too. We had a million dollars worth of equipment out there. That was why I got on this board.
These loads are much cheaper, much longer.
When I bought them from my house, it comes out of my pocket. That's a big...
Well, and I said, the other part was that, you know, unfortunately, I don't have the stuff in Goldstone tonight, because it would have made this a little bit easier if we could see the representations of what they were talking about, and some, some estimates. But we just have from what the meeting was, and of course, all that can be reimagined to a, you know, less expensive but functional thing. The whole front does need to be changed. And I think it would be much better to flip that monument. I was talking with the garden club today because they were interested in what's going on, and they were like, that would be great to flip this. I had to be honest, I said, for the first year I worked here, I didn't realize it was a memorial. I parked my car and I walked in. I thought it was, I thought it was a wall. You know, so if it was there and the setting was done right, I think it'd be much better to rent this park for everybody.
I don't know, I just think that it's, there's less space there that's gonna be affected if we didn't do anything there. And I think you're gonna find the things are cheaper to work on that end of the...
So you're thinking about like a ramp coming up and then some lift here or something?
Yeah.
Well, you know, again, when we get the stuff in Goldstone, then we can...
You may, you may, you need it out of there, I bet you, I bet. A bad question is a bad, but I just think knowing what these buildings are, what you, you start adding on the either side of this, it's gonna cost a lot more money than what I looked that way.
You don't have inside the building or adding on to the front?
Even if you add that on the front, it's just, you know, whatever it's gotta be there. If you add the side of this, that roof up there, you can start coming out there, you've got a building different.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if you put it, stick an elevator in the front of this building, you really are destroying the historical character of the building.
But no, no, the frame, something outside, that it's gonna be what the building is, and then put your elevator inside it.
Well, that's the same as doing it over here, and because this is a historical building, I think they kind of have connections if we did that.
Well, it's, well, anyway, I mean, I'm not an architect, but I'm just, from building experience working around that stuff, it's gonna cost a lot less money to add out of that front because you're coming right out and your roof is going away from you.
Yeah, well, yeah, I know what you're saying, too, but this would be a flat roof going out that way. It'd be virtually no different than what we have now.
It's, I don't know what it most anything, but I just, I think just working construction as long as I have, I think that you're gonna have less cost on it over that way.
Well, again, see some, maybe see some...
Whatever, you know, it just, just a thought, that's all.
Thank you, gentlemen, good night.
Good, good night.
Behave yourself, Ken.
Impossible.
Remember, I was the parole officer.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, did we want to go beyond the talking on that, or was it just...
Uh, no, you know, like I said, I really, when I put this on, I was hoping to have, I guess I'll probably get them tomorrow.
Yes.
Yeah, because it'll be a lot easier to discuss with the diagrams up in front of us, seeing everybody's seen it, yeah.
Okay, you want to talk about your budget?
Yeah, I mean, I put together a budget for fiscal '21. This was really just where I wanted to look at and just start the process going. I doubt anyone's had a lot of time to look at it, but it was really just, let's get things, get things going. It comes out mostly increase, or 77% of the increase was in highways, and the rest is kind of spread out. There was a few departments I have to talk with. I haven't adjusted the fire department or anything like that yet.
What did you add in the highways, Dave?
Let me take your budget, because I left my heater on the table here. Besides the normal administrative things, healthcare, wages, things like that, we have 5,000 more to trees, 10,000 more to chloride, because this magnesium chloride's working really well, and it's really...
It's showing money, it's telling you.
So, yeah, that's going from 50,000 to 60,000. 16,000 more on rentals, because it's much cheaper for us to rent this roadside mower than go out and, go out and buy a quarter million dollar thing. This thing breaks, we just call Fairfield and say, send us another one.
Yeah.
And we're gonna shrink in, I think, the amount of time we rent it and maybe just pay overtime so it's on the road longer for when we have it. Because that also is cheaper than renting it for another...
How do they rent it, by the hour or by the...
Three weeks, three weeks, we rent it now.
But do they rent by so many hours a week?
Uh, no. I'll have to go back and check the contract on that, but it's still be cheaper than the extra...
Okay, because any equipment I would rent, they rented, they rented, they rented several dollars a week based on 40 hours per week.
Yeah, no, it doesn't say that in this contract. It's hourly, yeah. Uh, let's see, then we have, I had to increase all the maintenance on the vehicles, going Going back to the equipment here. For many years, the amount that's been in that column, the 1,000s and 2,000s for vehicle repairs has not changed. During the course of the years, we've been able to make up the difference because fortunately, the price of gas and diesel has stayed low. But I'm no longer convinced that's gonna stay forever. And this is trying to put, the 2,050 on each one is a placeholder, is an accounting placeholder. It really doesn't mean much. But we're up, we're upping the amount to 51,000, I'm sorry, 41,000 for equipment repair for the whole fleet, which is somewhat more realistic than 21,000, 28,000. And all this stuff is expensive to fix. Tires for the grader run us $10,000, $12,000. Now, this, this money can disappear quickly. We've had a problem last year and the year before, cost us nearly $100,000 in repair, and this is not all equipment. This, this equipment, when I got here, was all pretty new. So I'm not sure of the maintenance or whatever, but we're outsourcing the work on this equipment, and I expect that to, we've topped the curve, and we're gonna start hanging down on how much it costs to repair this now. We're trying to get into a much more programmed and better maintenance of the vehicles, because, you know, the one costing us the most now is our newest tandem. It's costing us thousands of dollars, and that's, shouldn't be happening. You know, we do have a, the Max Force engine is an issue with one of them, so that hopefully will be paid for at some point.
I think you may find that if you go to different trucks, you may save some money too.
Yeah, yeah.
I, it wrong said that. You put a bad truck out there, you may scare somebody even thinking about it, but you're gonna, the other end, you're gonna save a lot.
Uh, yeah, I'm not, we put things out to bid.
Oh, I understand.
That's where it comes from.
And the other thing is that a good maintenance program, you're gonna save it out the other end anyway.
Well, this is where I think, this is, I think where we're really lacking.
I think we're lacking.
We need, we need to, and we, we're getting a much better maintenance routine. These vehicles are way too expensive not to be on top of all the time. And this is trying to give a more realistic view of how much we're gonna have to spend on these. But we should not be spending what we spent last year. That's ridiculous to spend that much money. And like I said, this is not an old fleet. You know, the one we're replacing is only 2009. It's 10 years old. The one we're kind of semi-retiring, taking the North Banker truck, that's not, it's not like we have 20-year-old trucks here. We have, and, you know, some of the stuff, the graders, the Volvo, this is new stuff, you know? So it's, it's, it's a different approach that we have now, but realistically, we passed the 28,000 mark a long time ago, so.
And also, it's part of our general philosophy we've been talking about of getting the crews out of the garage, repairing vehicles in and out, working on the roads.
Yeah.
Doing ditches, clearing brush, the, the stuff that they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it was a thing, guys work and repair their own trucks, but we didn't hire mechanics, we hired people to work on the roads. And every time they're in there for a day, it's a day lost, as far as I can see. Because we can take this down to Morris or some other vendor and have them work on it. And we have redundancy in the fleet, so when things go down, we can keep working. So we keep working and let people fix the trucks. You know, other than the basic routine things that people do when they're in the winter.
Well, yeah, we have the children, stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah, simple things, things that don't take time, rainy day little projects, but we have to get, get it back up to speed. That was the big expense here for the last two years, was trying to get this fleet back up to snuff. And I think we're there, our expenses are already much lower this year. Going into winter though, we're already at probably 24, 5,000, although that was mostly to one truck, which is...
Quite a lot of it went tipped over to...
Well, yeah, and that takes, takes off some from both years, because one flipped in both years. So you could say the repairs are more like, like 85,000, but still, that's a lot of money. And the things we're having repaired, you know, there's a lot of stories to... The one we're getting rid of, the Dodge, is, is, is well gone. But we have the 13 that we joined the class action suit on with the Max Force engine. We will get something out of that in the long run, but it's still, overall, it's too much. We entered a little on the budget, and it was spending too much to get these things up to snuff. So we get a program going and stay on top of the maintenance and send the stuff out, and we'll start spending less. It's the same kind of theory we're running on here of, you know, we do the project, we put the other grants in, we're not, you know, putting 20,000 of dollars in gravel to the same mudhole every year, you know? And the more ditching they do, the more trimming they do, the more brush cutting they do, the drier the road will be, and that's really what they need to do. So you see that reflected further down too, when we get to the transverse to reserves, the culvert reserve, I put up another 5,000. Class three road fund up to 11,000. Paving is up 10,000. And these are things that just need, we need money. 35,000 in the paving reserve is, is not enough. 45,000 is getting there. Because we have some roads that, you know, 35,000 matches the maximum state grant. That leaves us nothing for the other 14 miles of road that are solely our responsibility. So we start building up a little, and we can start working on some of our own roads.
Now, when we do those white道roads, they're all ground up before we pave them, right?
Uh, I, I wouldn't say we're doing any particular road a particular way. I think each road needs to be looked at by the people who are bidding and by Mike, and I don't think everything, you know, we should get to the point where we're talking about skimming roads and seal winged roads, and not, every road should be dug up.
Well, no, but the ones that are really bad, you can't pave over that. You've gotta grind it up.
That's what I mean, I don't want to say everything's gonna be one way or the other, because we chip sealed a lot three years ago.
Yeah, although that was, again, that's, that's an eyeball thing.
Yeah, so that's, we'll judge each road. A lot of the secondary paved roads are, really don't need much now, but if we don't start saving now, really, it's like Birch Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're looking at a 150, 60,000 job there, and I have $10,000.
Uh, this might be a good time, remember we already discussed on East Road, that last half a mile beyond the bridge?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that we can, that we can just talk about at some point, but yeah, we talked about grinding that up and returning that to gravel.
Yeah.
Once you pass the bridge, there's no houses on it, it's just a paved...
One house.
One house. It's just a paved road to a dirt road. I'm not quite sure why that's paved and...
Well, it was paved because you could receive a statement of that.
Well, now we're kind of stuck with it.
Well, they put the Route 7 in, they diverted the East Road. When it went underneath, they went, and they just paved basically to the end where the East Road used to end, is dirt.
Yeah, and even doing that section would be another $190,000, you know, where we could grind it up like we ground up State Park Road. And instead of driving on this paved road...
Greater work.
Yeah, you know, instead of driving on this paved road for a quarter mile to get to the dirt road, you just start on the dirt road. And it really would be no difference at all, except it'd be a lot cheaper, a lot cheaper. You know, because we have Buck Hill to do. You can go, you can go around on the list everywhere. We still have to finish White Creek all the way out, so...
Yeah, but they let it go too long.
Well, that's the part of...
You can't let it go too long.
That's the part of this, you know, between what was voted on at town meeting, moving the gravel up last year, and what I'm proposing here, it's increasing the highway budget by like 125,000. And most all that is going into what would be considered materials or the class three road fund, so that we can, you know, continue with the contract we're getting, because we use this money too to match, like the class three goes to match grants that we're getting too. So, you know, we could do the cross-hill work, we could do the troubled old work, and we could do this other work because we're getting grants, but...
Well, I think, Dave, with what we're doing, with the freight trains and everything else, that you're gonna see, that it's gonna start...
Yeah, I would love to stop...
You can start being leveled up.
And I'm already, I see differences, and I think we're on the way to the right, right place, but there's still a lot of work to be done. I don't think there's any way around that. And we're still talking about the, fact of the matter is, we need to continue to put material on the roads we have, so I think we're kind of in a good direction that way.
Is it enough?
I think it's enough to absorb for next year, and then we can, we can reevaluate again and look at it. I mean, is it enough? Well, you know, it's kind of never enough, because, you know, we can keep going forever with, because we don't know with the amount of issues we have. But I think that there's, this might be as much as we can absorb in a year between our work and hiring people.
I'm thinking specifically about paving at the moment. 35,000, you said, gets us the matching grant for...
That matches the grant, yeah.
For the, for the state, state grants, and that takes care of the ones where we can get state grants on, but you said we've got 14 miles of road that...
Of other roads. None are serious at the moment, and with the right planning, you can combine the paving reserve money with the class three, because these are all class three roads, that's why we don't get money for them. And... And that's how we did Harvest Hills and all of Parren Acres because they're all class three roads. We take some out of the paving reserve and we could do a project like that because that was about $80,000. Yeah, it's hard, you know, I know what you're saying, it's hard to say, but it's like, how much can the town absorb at one shot and let's see how far we go on this.
But the paving, the paving we're saving for, the 10,000 that we're saving out of this 45,000 is for class three roads.
Well, yeah, or anything, it can be used for anything, but it's in the paving reserve. If we pave a class three road, it can be used there. And we can combine that with the class three road fund. It all depends on where we are that year and what we look at. We haven't really even started discussing next year yet, the next construction season starting after July 1st. We have to go back, we have to pick a road for the paving, which we may or may not get the grant this year. But if we don't get the grant in one year, we have 45,000 to put towards something else. And we don't get it every year. So you're figuring every other year, we're putting 45,000 away.
Okay.
Because the state's not giving it to us.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And the formula for the state is, and it's perfectly fine, I think we get a lot of grants from the state, but we're not going to get one every year. So in a couple of years, three years, we'd probably have over $100,000 saved that we could use on a class three road.
Okay.
Then I think the rest on there, I think we covered that. Yeah, and the debts are, except for the garage, the debts are gone. And as I like to say, the rest, there's a few, I have to talk with some of the department heads and things, but I don't really see a lot of change in the rest of it.
But the main story is we're, we're putting a lot more money into the roads, a fair amount more money into the roads.
Yeah, $85,478 to be precise. That's what I put in for next year for the road.
Okay.
To get it going.
Sounds like a good start, yeah. We'll look through it in detail.
Yeah.
I like that you up the spending on trees because Jim talks to me all the time that we've got lots of trees out there that are a threat.
That's scary, that, the 15,000 for that.
Yeah, it's like three trees.
It's amazing how, you know, I hate to say it, but the storm like the other day actually helps out because it knocks down a whole bunch of trees, which then just go pick up. But it's not the ideal way of maintaining your canopy. But yeah, the 20,000 each year, we should probably try and kick that up because it really unfortunately isn't a lot.
Look at the ashes that are gone.
The, yeah, the ash bore is a threat that we're not addressing really to the extent that Jim thinks we ought to.
Yeah.
Because those trees are, we haven't really been hit yet, but it will come and all the ashes will fall down in the road and.
Yeah, we have to have a way for.
So he's just talking about cutting them down. There's nothing we can do to save it.
No, it's pretty much inevitable. I've been to a couple of state information sessions about it and the only, there is management you can do to slow it down, but the point of that management is for people who have ash, that's lumber that they want to get money out of, they can slow it down long enough for them to harvest it, but that's really it. I mean, in terms of long-term, they're going to go.
Do you remember the tree? Remember the elm, you know, do you remember the elms?
The elm, yeah, the Dutch elm disease.
Yeah. Generations that have grown them, but not elms, have no idea.
I made a lot of money on the Dutch elm disease.
Did you?
I gave a lot of, I'm pleased with it.
At the time.
Okay, anything else to say about that?
I'd be the fan to mention that about the Australian ballot.
Well, that's up to you, yeah.
I'd like to see that get put out of the, for the March meeting for Australia, that was Australian down voting for budget. Because we're having, what do we have, 5% of the town population over there for a slow vote?
Probably somewhere around that, I don't know for sure.
I mean, just, that's ridiculous.
Like I said before, I have mixed feelings about it and I haven't heard anything from population about it, but maybe.
Heard some.
What did you hear?
That they'd like to do Australian ballot.
They'd like to do the budget by Australian ballot?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, this one Ken brought up before, it's something that we would have to craft a proposal for town meeting day on the Australian ballot. It would have to be voted by Australian ballot to see if the budget for fiscal '22 would be the first one to go on. And the people would just decide whether they want to continue with this way or change it for '22. And it's up to the board or if the board doesn't want to move on it, then someone can get a petition, 5%, I think it's 5%. No, I can't put 5% that'd be wrong. Whatever percentage it is that you need, that's a marlin question to get it on the ballot. I've heard mixed things about it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, certainly the people at the forum meeting argue vehemently against that.
Yeah, but as Ken points out, they're, they're a very small part of the population now and, yeah, we do, we do expose ourselves to, you know, 30 people who decided that they want to, you know, zero out the highway budget. Could just about do that.
Yeah.
Let's, let's look into it, let's.
See what we need.
See what we need. I mean, I guess what we need is just, I mean, we write the question on the ballot, it's really.
It's actually canned language too. We'll get it directly from VLCT and it can just be put on there. It'd be a great debate at town meeting on how people feel about it. But then the next day, the townspeople would decide whether.
Right. Would you like me to send an editorial, yeah, an editorial to the banner and see if, see what kind of reactions we get?
Sure.
I'd love to do it, yeah.
Yeah, that select board is considering this, there are pros and cons, let us know what you think.
Yeah.
See if, see how people react. Okay.
I don't know what the record is, Ken, but it seems like every year there's less people at the forum.
Well, there certainly were less this year, I think it seemed.
It seemed like less this year to me also.
Well, people keep telling us that we're supposed to take that as a compliment, that if they didn't like what we were doing, they would be here in droves.
I know.
Well, I'm going to ask you a little bit.
I can't tell if he likes us or not.
It's good.
Except striking the executive session there. I cut and paste this a lot, I must have stuck on it from the last one, so.
Okay. As far as action items, we've pretty much cleared our slate of previous ones. The reserve funds are in front of the judge, we don't know when we'll hear back from that. The sheriff business with the dogs is going to get incorporated into the ordinances as Dave works through that. And the only one I've got for us tonight is the editorial about whether or not we want to go with Australian ballot for the budget vote. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Motion to adjourn from Tony, seconded by Ken, all in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.